This meeting is being recorded.
Trevor, just so you're aware, in the commission chambers is just June and myself. There's no one from the public here. For your information.
Say that one more time, Rick.
So in the commission chambers, we just have June and myself. There's no public here at this time.
Oh, okay. Awesome. All right, I'm trying to get my things a little bit lined up, but we can go ahead and get started. On the agenda.
Rick?
Yes.
Don Stefanic here.
Hi, Don.
The past couple of commission meetings in the chambers, the cameras have not been turned on and it's very difficult for people who join us via Zoom to see and hear what's happening without the visual. Is that something we could look into?
We have looked into that and we're possibly going to be able to have cameras. We have a little different situation than the commission meetings. The commission hires out a person to do the audio for that. We don't have that funding available, so we're trying to look at options for that. But Charlie, he's going to be presenting from his office and he'll share everything on his screen with you.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate the explanation.
All right. Well, let's go ahead and get started with the pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance to and to the republic. Okay, roll call. Let's see who we've got here. Why don't we just go ahead and if you're on the call, planning commissioner's name off so I can put you down.
Jared Montgomery's here.
Justin Torman.
Janet Wampler.
Jason Johnson.
Okay, so I've got. I think is that everybody? Commissioner Wampler, Johnson, Stefanic, Torman, Montgomery.
Commissioner Burton. I think we're missing.
Say what?
Commissioner Burton, right?
See, missing. Commissioner Burton, you there?
It looks like he's not here.
I don't see his name.
Okay. All right, well, let the record show that we have Commissioner Montgomery, Commissioner Torman, Commissioner Stefanic, Commissioner Wampler, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Schuman in attendance for the work session for September 20. Okay, the minutes weren't sent out, so I believe they're going to be sent out next time. So we'll postpone that the next time and we'll go right into the work session. That work session item number one, moderate income housing implementation discussion. Is Charlie, Rick, is Charlie running this or who?
Yes, Charlie's going to be presenting this.
There we go.
Charlie. Sorry about that. Can you guys see my screen? Do you see my calendar or do you see a bunch of funny lines all over the place?
Your calendar.
Okay, let's try that again. Okay. All right. So I wanted to run you through, you guys had a conversation, well, at least all but our two new planning commissioners had a conversation with Scott Perks a couple of months ago about moderate income housing and the state code changes that are now required of us. There was a little bit of confusion in that meeting, I think, just kind of based on the way it was presented. And I just wanted to try and clarify a little bit with you guys and show you where we're going, what we're doing, what our responsibilities are, what your responsibilities at the planning commission are, and whether, you know, what track we're on, what schedule we're on, so forth. As we look at what the state code says, it talks about how general plans need to have a moderate income housing element. And the state has recently, this last year, said that moderate income housing element has to be implementable. And so not only do you have to have a moderate income housing element, but you also have to have an implementation plan on how you're going to implement that components of your moderate income housing plan within the next five years. And so you need to have a five-year implementation plan. So part of doing this, we do have moderate income housing in our plan. I think we've got enough of the moderate income housing requirements that state code requires so that we don't have to make any modification to our plan, even though I do think that I'm going to suggest that we do make some minor tweaks to our plan. What we're going to do tonight is we're going to look at what's in our plan versus what's in state code. And we're going to try and mix and match and see what it is that we know that we have. And I want to get your guys', you know, pick your guys' brain on maybe what you want to see more of or less of and get a little bit of direction on how to go about changing the plan. Our very first step in all of this is to essentially, we need to create a report here within the next few weeks on that that documents how our plan complies with the requirements, the new requirements of state code. And then reevaluate what the gap analysis is in moderate income housing in the Ogden Valley. That gap analysis, what we're supposed to do is we're supposed to find out how many moderate income households exist in the Ogden Valley right now. So how many households are there that earn eighty percent of the county area median income? County area median income is about sixty-two or sixty-three thousand a year. And so area median, or sorry, eighty percent of that, we're looking at about forty-eight or so thousand a year. So households that make forty-eight thousand a year, how many of those exist in the Ogden Valley right now? And then how many housing units exist in the Ogden Valley right now that can support the families that have that need? And so that'll give us our gap analysis of how far behind we are or how far ahead we are, if we are ahead, that we can then report to the state. The other part of our reporting is we need to tell them what we've done to advance our plan. And now with the new requirements of state code as of this last year, we need to tell them how how we not only have advanced the plan, but will continue to advance the plan over the next five years. Once that component is done, as far as schedule goes, and that that's what, so we'll be talking about that component tonight. In the future, once that component is done, we'll be looking at making just minor modifications to our general plan, to the moderate income housing element of the plan, as well as the population and demographics element using the 2020 census data or any newer census data that may come out as we're working on this. I foresee that lasting us maybe three or four months before we come out with a revised moderate income housing chapter in the general plan for you guys to look at. So in the meantime, we'll be working on just showing the state that we are in compliance until we get to that point. I think a lot of what we're going to do here tonight, as well as as we create that report and submit it to the state, is kind of flesh out some of the weaknesses of our own plan and how we can maybe even boost some of that for the future in that that update that'll come for three, four months from now. Okay. Actually, forgot that we were meeting only electronically. I was going to have you guys do this little matching game just as an exercise with all of us together. But since we're looking at this online, I'm just going to walk you guys through what I've identified here in terms of what our plan complies with, given what the state code requires. So in the left-hand column, we've got state code strategies, implementation strategies. And in the right-hand column, we've got Ogden Valley general plan strategies. When we first brought this to you a couple of months ago, I know there was some confusion about how can we have strategies that check the box of for state code? How can we have one strategy that checks the box of four state code strategies? And vice versa, how can, you know, for, or excuse me, one state code strategy then turn into four of ours? And so I just wanted to show you how some of that works. It's really just in the writing. They were wrote, they were written independent of each other. And so when you peel the layers back, you can see how they how they work together. For example, here we've got, on this side, we've got fourteen of the state code strategies. Now, the state code, I think they have like twenty-four strategies. There were a few of them that weren't applicable to us. For example, one of them, well, a couple of them were about transit corridor. So protecting transit corridors and making sure we get moderate income housing along transit corridors where we don't have transit in the valley. That's not something we're looking at right now, but in the future, if we do get transit in the valley that are serving these village areas, that may be something we can set our sights on. Okay. Just to go through each of these items here and show you how we're matching up, the state code talks about rezoning for densities. Now, if you were to take the, take what the Ogden Valley general plan says as a whole, well, we don't want more density, right? And I don't think that's necessarily what state code is saying. I think what it's saying is find areas where you can put more housing in a smaller footprint. And that is what our plan, what the Ogden Valley general plan does say that we should be doing. Because if you do that, you can actually create an economy of scale where you're putting more housing units out on the market, which then, you know, the, in terms of supply and demand, you're putting a lot more supply out there, which eventually reduces the the value of comparable homes over time. But then you're also providing smaller homes in a smaller footprint, which that by itself can help with the affordability issue. So what I've identified is we've got two strategies in our plan that meet with this. So reason for densities, we've got provide a mixture of housing types in our plan. Our our plan says facilitate and mix of housing types in new construction and keeping with neighborhood design standards and community sustainability, develop cluster ordinances that will allow for mixed housing types in compact areas consistent with village area locations on map eight and pursuant to small area plan, plans referenced in commercial development implementation 1.1.1. And then it also, I think, matches up with encourage moderate income housing in villages. Before I read this, I want to make sure you guys know the the language in bold here. That's just language I put together to make it easier to match these things up. The paragraphs underneath is actually what either the state code or what our plans say. So here, rezone for densities, we're looking at encourage the development of low to moderate income housing within or near established cities, towns, and village areas in order to protect agricultural lands and provide open spaces within the unincorporated areas of Weber County. Okay, accessory dwelling units. We've done a lot of work with accessory dwelling units. So state code says create or allow for and reduce regulations related to internal or detached accessory dwelling units in residential zones. Come down here, accessory dwelling units. We've got a provision for that in our code, or excuse me, our plan. Manage accessory dwelling units to allow for affordable housing opportunities without increasing the overall impact of residential development on the valley. Investigate the potential for adding accessory dwelling units as an allowed use in the zoning ordinance. Okay. Rezone for mixed-use densities. Not a whole lot of difference between reason for densities and reason for mixed-use densities, except for we're talking about a mixture of uses, which mixed housing type speaks right to it. I've already read that to you. As well as encourage moderate income housing in village areas. So you guys know from the form-based zone that we've recently adopted, how we've been trying to accommodate a mixture of housing that that is at higher densities by using a TDR element that doesn't increase the overall density of the of the Ogden Valley. State code talks about single-room occupancies. We don't have anything in our plan that relates to that, but the adoption of the form-based village code does, that actually talks about how that that basically says that you can have residential, excuse me, residential units combined together in the same building. Essentially, these can be single-room occupancy units at the developer or the landowner's option. And you guys probably remember from the Nordic discussion, that is going into the Nordic Valley Development Agreement that for specifically for moderate income housing, we will allow them to do as as small as three hundred square foot studio apartments to accommodate for the workforce housing that they're going to be doing.
Charlie?
Yes.
Sorry, should we wait to the end? Should we jump in?
Jump in. Feel free to jump in at any time.
What I'm picturing here, and I I remember this conversation with Nordic, but what I'm picturing also is somebody maybe doing like a staff hotel or something like that, like maybe have a powder or something like that. Beyond that, what happens with such as with Nordic, when they discussed, or they can sell that back to what was it HUD or whatever department it was that they can sell it to?
The Weaver Housing Authority.
Yeah.
So how many are you questioning? How does it work?
Well, if you're saying that in our plan, we, you know, we have something about that, like with, say, with Nordic, but if they can sell it back and it's not about actually creating the unit at the resort, are we still in compliance? Or how does that work?
Yeah, so I still think that puts us in compliance. It may, that may shift us to be in compliance with a different part of state code and a different part of our own plan. As as a whole, the whole overall objective is create moderate income housing, which if we were to allow the housing authority to cash in on property and and use that money, that money then is required to snowball somehow into moderate income housing by some other means within one mile of the property. And so that's that's kind of how we try to target that. That makes sense. Okay. Okay, zoning incentives. Implement zoning incentives for moderate income units in new developments. You guys know that we worked on that with the form-based zone. And our plan says bonus density. Bonus density should be used sparingly and only in the event minimal bonuses can be leveraged for significant and meaningful advancement of goals and principles of this plan. You guys know, I didn't like calling the additional moderate income housing units in the form-based zone bonuses, because I I just don't see them as bonuses. We're actually just trying to make sure that the developer breaks even with these incentives as opposed to, you know, makes more money, because we're requiring them to do a certain amount of moderate income housing. Kind of doing the push-pull, leading with a carrot, both a carrot and a stick. We've got the stick from the from the ordinance, the form-based ordinance that says you shall do some kind of moderate income housing. And then the carrot that says, and if you do, we're not going to make it cost you a ton of money. Okay, modern income housing impact fees. So reduce, waive, or eliminate impact fees related to moderate income housing. We don't have anything in our plan that suggests that we should do that, nor have we been working on anything to that effect, but I do think it's something that we should focus on here in the near future. Implement a mortgage assistance program for employees of the county, an employer that provides contracted services for the county or any other public employer that operates within the county. So our plan doesn't specifically call for anything of that nature, but if you recall from the adoption of the form-based zone, we did change how the county determines what is moderate income housing, or excuse me, what is workforce housing? We have a new definition for workforce housing that basically says it's whatever the state says it is, which is eighty percent of the county area median income. Or it's a hundred percent of the specific planning areas, area median income for a public service sector employee who, whose primary workplace is in the Ogden Valley, basically, within that planning area.
Hey, yes. Commissioner Burton, can I ask you a question? I think, I think if I understood what you're saying, we got a non-secreter here. You're saying we we can't increase supply. That means density. We can't increase supply, but we're going to lower the cost. Well, there's this law of economics that says decreased supply requires increase in cost or follows with increased in cost. So I don't see how you can decrease cost by limiting supply.
Help me understand when you say limiting supply. What what are you?
Well, you're saying, okay, we've got a lot of demand in the valley right now. There is, some say that nobody wants to increase density. Okay, some some say that, not all say that. I don't see how you can increase supply without increasing density. Because if you limit supply, the cost is going to go up. We're kidding ourselves if we say we're going to have moderate income housing when everything in the expense, the cost of housing in the valley is exploding because of limited supply. More people want to be there than there is housing to accommodate them.
I I agree with the the market analysis. Is that is that related to employee assistance? Is that what you're?
No, it's it's just a general comment. I think based on what you said, we got to somehow come up with this lower-cost housing. But how do you come up with lower-cost housing if you don't increase supply?
Yeah, yeah. And that's that's when we're when we're relying on the private market to take care of it. That is exactly the challenge that we're faced with. And so finding a way to offset.
Going back to this Nordic thing, the Nordic employee housing was an effort to encourage them to have housing for their employees so they wouldn't be out on the roads. As an opportunity for them, not a requirement of them. Somehow that turned into a requirement. If you're going to do your development, you have to have this low-income housing and turn it over to the Weaver Housing Authority or whatever. Well, that's another way it started out. It started out as a what we used to call bonus when that wasn't a scary word, and saying their benefits, if we let you have house your employees here in these small apartments, there's a benefit to the community because these people aren't now out on the roads. You don't have to use one of these expensive development rights to house these employees. And whenever I hear the the idea that we don't want this developer making any money, well, if developers didn't make money, we wouldn't have developers. And none of us, we'd be living in tents somewhere. So just trying to understand how we get lower-cost housing by limiting supply.
Got it. Okay, okay. So we're coming back up to zoning incentives. I I understand. Sorry, Commissioner Burton, I was a little bit behind, I think. So that is exactly the challenge that we're we're up against and essentially the challenge that's facing the entire Wasatch Front as well as other communities, even in this slight recession that we're, housing market recession, I don't want to say real recession, but yeah. But even in this housing market recession that we've been having over the last few months, we still have a limited supply. And so the really folks, investors, as well as people looking for homes, everyone's just kind of taking a pause going, what's going to happen? We don't want to be, you know, making a lifelong decision that's going to end up falling, you know, flat on our face. And so really, the rub is how do we, how do we try and help the private market help create moderate income housing? And exactly to your point, Commissioner Burton, we need to help the developer realize that there's not a disincentive to them to creating just like we we did when we worked with Nordic, you know, helping them see that, you know, there is a benefit to them as much as there is a benefit to those who need the moderate income housing.
Well, and you're sounding, Charlie, with all due respect, you're sounding like I'm from the government. I'm here to help you, private sector. I think the private sector does fine without government help. It's the government impediments that raise the cost. The Vice President of the Weaver Home Home Builders Association just told me the cost is no longer twenty-five percent of the cost of a new home is for regulation. It's now thirty-three percent. Well, if you want to read, that's one way to reduce the cost of housing is reduce the regulations. All the hoops these people have to jump through to be able to have a door and a bed so somebody can live there. We had to focus on how do we decrease the regulations, not increase them.
And Commissioner Burton, I I think we're we're in agreement on this, not in disagreement. And I think we're saying pretty close to the same thing. We need to make sure that as we're asking developers to provide something, that we're not hitting them in the pocketbook as we're doing so. And that's that's what I'm trying to say here. Okay.
Well, you're talking about requiring developers to do some kind of low-income housing. There's regulation. I'm saying that thirty-three percent of the cost of housing is now complying with all these hundreds of pages of regulations. These hoops to jump through to be able to build a housing unit, reduce the hoops, you reduce the cost of the housing unit. Won't require people to do something they'll take care of. If there's a need out there in the community, the private sector can take care of it. They don't need government to force them to do it with more pages of regulations.
Yeah, I appreciate that perspective. Yep, as we as we move forward on working on moderate income housing, we just got to come into compliance with what the state code says. And the legislature has put out these rules. And so we're just working on complying with those rules. And so I'm trying to show the planning commission, Commissioner Burton, I'm trying to show the planning commission how our plan is already in compliance with what the legislature has asked of us. Okay, I'm going to move on. So the next thing we have on the list is find funding partners and sources. So we do have a tie in our plan from that to supporting the Weaver Housing Authority. We have, next one we have in the state statute is tax increment financing set aside. So essentially, what it says is demonstrate utilization of a moderate income housing set aside from a community reinvestment agency, CRA, a redevelopment agency, RDA, or a community development and renewal agency, which is probably a CDRA, maybe? Or create or subsidize or subsidize moderate income housing. So essentially, the the state legislature telling us that we should be looking at public finance mechanisms that doesn't cost the greater taxpayer. It costs the developer looking to develop. And actually, it'll be the folks who live there in the end. What this is, if you don't know what tax increment financing is, let's say, let's talk about the Nordic development. It's an easy one. We've we've all been looking at that one for the last few months. Let's say they've got the old golf course, which, right, you know, at that time was zoned as open space. Not a whole lot of development potential out of that property, not a lot of financial value in that property. I didn't look at what the tax assess value was for that property. But, you know, relatively low. If you put one home on that property, the value, the taxable value goes up. If you put a, you know, a twelve-plex on the property, it goes up even more. You put a resort hotel on that property significantly more, right? So the difference from what the taxable value is today, or the tax revenue that is brought in today versus what it will be after that hotel is built, there's a delta. There's a delta there. There's extra money that is coming into the county or whoever the taxing agency is that the taxing agency wouldn't have otherwise had. And so with tax increment financing, that's the increment. Basically, whoever the taxing agency is or the taxing authority is uses that future increment and returns portion of it. It could be all of it, but usually it's just a portion of it, sixty, eighty percent or so back to the developer to use to build the development. And so in this case, they would use that increment to reinvest in moderate income housing. And we don't have that anywhere in our plan, but that is something that we are working on with Nordic, actually, to create tax increment financing for their public facilities. So it's a hundred percent of the the folks that are involved in this tax is a hundred percent in the Nordic project. So nobody on the outside of periphery or anywhere else in the valley has this obligation. But as their value increases, Nord's value increases, that difference then gets reinvested into the creation of sewer, the creation of water, expansion of their roadways, et cetera. And I haven't floated the idea with Nordic yet that maybe we should be using this for their moderate income housing component. But that might take a little little bit off of their backs when it comes to actually building some of these units. If you'll recall, what our agreement is with Nordic so far, again, the county commission hasn't signed off on it yet. But what it is so far is that they will find the nooks and crannies, at least three hundred square feet to build at least a studio apartment, if not larger. But they're just reserved in the floor space, actual building of that air of that studio apartment or larger is going to be the responsibility of the Weber Housing Authority or the county or some other entity responsible. Maybe if they could see the benefit through a tax increment finance of investing and actually building these as well. You know, rising tides lift lift all ships kind of thing.
So actually, sorry again. And one question on tax increment financing, that's saying the taxes that would come off this new house on the golf course won't go to the taxing entities, it'll go to the developer. And therefore, there is no tax to the general public. I think that's maybe missing something. If that house on the golf course isn't contributing to all the taxing entities for the cost of their operations like the school district and the county and everybody else, then it is costing all the general taxpayers because they have to pay more to subsidize the house on the golf course use of the taxing entities services. So it is a tax on everybody else. My taxes will increase because of that house on the golf course not paying its share into the taxing entities.
That's right. That's a good observation. And that's one of the reasons why the county commission doesn't authorize a hundred percent tax increment. And so that increment that comes in with the county commission so far has been looking at anytime they've ever done a tax increment agreement is looking at what is it going to cost for operations and maintenance of, you know, the effect or the impact of this new development on the area, on the county as a as a whole, you know, on the sheriff's department, on the fire, all that kind of stuff. And what is it that the county can afford to do without? For, you know, that the whatever period of time it is, ten years, fifteen years, or whatever that period of time.
So does that mean eighty percent of the taxes we pay really isn't needed by the taxing entities?
I don't think so. I'm not sure how we would draw that conclusion.
I think that's what you just said. Only twenty percent of what we get taxed really is needed by the taxing entities. Eighty percent is just fluff and it can be used for all kinds of stuff. I'm I'm diverging, but I thought that's an interesting observation that they only need twenty percent of the high property taxes we're paying.
If you think about, I'm I'm not sure I'm seeing the logic in that. If you think about, for example, Powder Mountain. The Summit Group did, the county did tax increment financing with them. And the amount of value that the county is receiving or has been receiving because of the new development that's up there. I think that they're at eighty percent. They might be at sixty percent. I've got to look into that to know for sure, but that that difference, the twenty percent or forty percent that's coming to the county is a boon to what the county would have otherwise received on the property, which which was nearly zero. And the the investment that that puts into that that development is not coming out of the operation of maintenance pockets of the county. And so the county is still making more revenue off of the top of that mountain than it would have made before. While the developer was able to use those funds to bond and create a street system for their development. So in the end, the developer is a little better off as as is the county coffers, which means the taxpayer. If if you'd like a little bit more information, Commissioner Burton, on how that works and how rising tides lift all 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 ships, I can get you in touch with John Bond. I think he'd be more than happy to to walk you through the value that is created through tax increment financing.
Hey, Charlie, can I interject here on this? So go to the top of the sheet you've got here for me. Okay, so this is something you've made, but what if I remember, if I recall, this is the we have options here is is what you told us in the previous meeting, we can pick several different things and choose to implement them is at the end goal. So I know we started going through these line by line. And in some ways, I think that's good, but I'd really like to know where we're going with this. Can you give us a bullet point kind of executive summary and then we can dive into this?
Sure. Yep. The it's exactly what you said. The intent is to look at what it is that the state is requiring of us. Look at what we have and then determine for ourselves whether or not we need to make changes to the plan. Or if we are in compliance with the plan as it is. So it's really the generation of a discussion like we're having to flesh out ideas for the future.
Okay, so how many do we need to pick from? Is that is this the sheet that we're talking about? Or is that another thing?
That's right. So minimum minimum requirement is four. But if we want priority funding status, priority status for state funds, it's ten. So every link that I've provided for you off of one of these circled numbers in state code is tied to something that the county already has. So for example, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. And then this one that says anything else. And so we've got quite a few elements, implementation strategies that the county has that speaks to what the state's already asking for.
So we have the ten?
We have at least ten.
Okay. So what's the problem? Like you said that we need to look and see that we're in compliance and you just told us that we are.
I'm I'm walking you guys through what the the relationship is between what the state code says, what our plan says. And just trying to stimulate a conversation. I honestly, we we could have just submitted our report to the state on this and and not brought this to you guys. But I know Rick wanted us to have a good conversation with you guys about modern income housing.
I I think the conversation is great. I just want to make sure I know where we're going with this. So like I say, I wanted to know. That's why I want to know is where are we at with? Are we in compliance? Like, what do we need to be focusing on as we look through this? Obviously, you know, we've got we've got things that we we might some might agree, disagree politically, some things we're already doing. I just want to make sure I know what it is we're we're looking for. And and what you want to get out of this. And that's what I'd really like to like to hear.
Perfect.
Charlie, I thought you gave us deliverables at the very, very beginning. Like you said, there were a couple of things we had to come up with.
Yeah, so my intention of this discussion is to flesh out what your guys' priorities are. What you what would you guys like to see implemented over the next five years? Now, I've got a spreadsheet down here that shows state code strategies. How do they align with Ogden Valley Plan strategies? I've got implementation timeline that I'm suggesting. The implementation mechanism and then just some notes on how they work. I just wanted to make sure before we dived into this. You guys had an understanding of what it is that we're talking about.
Can you just clarify that the state codes that are on the left hand side are those? Does that include the new changes? Because you also said something about floating for three months and then having a revisit. So does that have the latest of the late?
This is the latest of the late for state code. This is what we have in our general plan. My suggestion is that we can revise some of this to speak a little bit more directly to these ideas over here. If the planning commission's goal, and this is kind of one of the things I want to tease out from the conversation, the planning commission's goal is just to meet the minimum mandatory requirement of state code. I think we're there. We just need to write a report on how we're doing it. And I've already got the spreadsheet laid out to send to the state.
Can I ask that in the future, if it's all right, unless there's anything in here we're not supposed to have that you send this to us? Because I'd love to have had an opportunity to read this before, and then I could actually have an intelligent conversation about it. I can't read it off the screen while listening to you talk. Just in the future, I'd I'd really prefer just to be able to read it ahead of time.
Yeah, no, I I agree. It was formulated over the last couple of days. That's the issue. And honestly, I think if we were sitting around the board table with the papers in our hands, it'd be a little bit easier to deal with. But if you guys would rather, we don't have to have this full dialogue today. We can postpone this conversation until we're in front of each other in person. And I can get this stuff into your hands where you can read through it on your own. If that's easier for you guys.
Well, so Charlie, one of your what you're what you'd like to take from this, if I heard, is you'd like to hear what our what our thoughts as a group are on what which areas of this, you know, basically based on these bullet points, which ones would we like to focus on? Is that correct?
That's right.
All right, let's let's go back up to that. We've talked, we've made it through a couple of these. I think you got some in you got some input on tax and refunding financing. You want to finish around any of those kind of is we'll we'll just cover each one generally. And I would encourage everyone from the planning commission to speak up if that's one that you like, dislike. And want to want to see more of that way. We can give you that feedback that you'd like.
Thank you.
I think what from my take from what you've been saying, it looks like we're already doing a lot of the things. And I, you know, looks like we're doing a lot in the transferable development rights and impact fees. Accessory dwelling. And I'm I'm excited to hear about that one. So, yeah, let's let's go that if everybody else, if there's other questions or anything anybody wants to interject, please, please do. Let's let's give him the feedback that he wants on these. On which ones of these we think we could prioritize.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just getting through the rest of these to make sure we're all looking at or, you know, working from the same information. Next one down is accessory dwelling and impact fees. Well, that ties to accessory dwelling units that we've already discussed. Transferable development rights. That's something that's in state statute. And you guys know that we've got a big component of our general plan is based on that. Multi-family residential allowances. So what the state code says here is creator allow for and reduce relay get sorry, regulations related to multi-family residential dwellings compatible in scale and form with detached single family residential dwellings and located in walkable communities within residential zones. So I've got this tied directly to mixture of housing types and the creation of village areas. And then housing for fifty five plus is actually is disabled or fifty five plus. I didn't read that until last minute there. And we've got something directly in our plan to speak to that. And then any other implementation deemed appropriate and something else the state code says is, let's see. Including the dedication of local funding sources for modern income housing or the adoption of a land use ordinance that requires ten percent or more residential development in a residential zone be dedicated to moderate income housing. One of the ways that our form based code speaks to this specifically, we we say five percent. But then we give a menu. It's either five percent of creating moderate income housing or certain percentage of land can be donated, a certain percentage of floor area can be donated. Just looking for ways to create a snowball effect where essentially the housing authority can utilize whatever it is that they're given and and turn it into moderate income housing. Okay, now some of the things that we didn't address that's in the plan. Conduct a housing barriers analysis. Well, this has to happen. Actually, our plan says every two years state code this last year changed to every one year. We need to do that barriers analysis and and provide a gap analysis as well. Monitor the market data. That is something that we do every year as we create our two year or excuse me, as we create our annual report. Which this is all part of. Housing survey of other communities. So looking at what other communities are doing to track their housing stock, one of the or the goals of the plan is to make sure we're monitoring and tracking the not just availability, but also the the condition, the repair condition of the moderate income housing stock available. And we don't have a lot available. And so tracking that right now isn't a super big deal. But as we create it in the future, we'll want to have have ways to track it. Emergency home repair program. So Ogden City has an emergency home repair program, and I think the housing authority has one as well. So just basically says support that. Again, more tracking tools. The plan really calls out the need to track this kind of thing. Okay, so those are the ones that don't speak directly to state code. A lot of this, when it comes to tracking, we're just looking for measurables, but really there's not a lot of implementation of built into them. And that's why there's not a lot matching. Okay, now that we've read.
Now, Charlie, I'm having a memory of a meeting. It was a Zoom meeting open to the public a number of months ago. It was about four plus hours long and you led the whole thing. And it was basically the Ogden Valley Plan with illustrations and whatnot, if I remember correctly. And during that meeting, I remember a specific part of it where you talked about a plan where if I'm if I'm remembering correctly, so correct if I'm not, but that affordable housing that you had it kind of planned out in that flat area around even park behind it. That's the way my memory has it. Is that was that correct?
Sort of. Yeah. So the Old Town Eden shows it's not. It's not modern income housing specifically planned out in there. It's it's more multi-family housing in and around the park area there, which a lot of that can be modern.
It was like a large lot was a quarter acre. It was something dramatic like that. Back then, I was on that call and I was listening and obviously we couldn't ask questions or whatever. How does that? I mean, like, that obviously goes to the implementation. How would that plan come to be? Is what I'm not sure, because if you're looking for a developer to do that, and and to everybody's point, if it's not financially viable, they don't make the money back versus buying the land at what it's valued at now to build affordable housing or multiple family, you know, housing or whatnot. So I I'm guessing that that's what you're getting at here is how, you know, the implementation strategy, but what's your suggestion? I mean, if that was the plan, that that flat ground area is a designated area for it. How do we do that?
So let me pull up a couple of things. So we can all read it together. So here is the form based village zone here. Workforce housing. Okay. And then I'm also going to pull up the map that you were looking at. Yeah. Okay. So here we are, the the reddish color that is multi-use commercial, which has residential second floor or second floor or above. The darker orange is the multi-family. And then when you get outside the darker orange, the lighter orange, there's your quarter acre minimum. For example. Okay, so here's the park. You can kind of see how it radiates out from there. Okay, let's come over to workforce housing requirements. Okay, so participation in creating workforce housing is required. So anyone who wants to develop in this area here in the form basis zone, under the form base zone is required to participate in creating workforce housing. Okay, there are, there's a housing development. Okay, there are, there's a housing development coming in right up in this area here in the near future. And I'm working with those developers right now. They want to rezone to the form base. This is a three acre zone. Most of the homes that are over here are on one acre properties. And this, these lighter green lines do indicate for one acre properties over this area. So they're going to transfer units from other property that they have. Up into here so they could do. On average, one acre properties. But they know that for their development, they're going to need to do some portion or some component. Of this menu. In order to comply. And so every individual landowner, and this is the hard part here. Because there are a lot of individual landowners here, but every individual landowner will be responsible for contributing to this. If they want to develop into the form-based zone.
So, but my confusion comes in with the term contribute. So originally, when, so for example, with the Nordic facility. It made sense to me that, you know, this 300 square foot studio apartment for staff employees, because as Commissioner Burton said, it takes them off the street. They're there, they have to be there first thing in the morning, they're grooming at night, you know, it makes a lot of sense for the workers to be on site. And then I read that, or you can, you know, donate, sell whatever to. Weber Housing Authority. So when you say contribute, it. It doesn't really mean that they build it. It means that they somehow. But, but so if, in my opinion, if we're not going to set aside. An absolute spot for housing to be done. No one wants to do it. Everyone's going to sell their land. I mean, why wouldn't they? It's the real estate market's great. So. I would think we have to say, listen, you know, either, I mean, I understand the quandary because you, you know, it's not, it's not financially. Attractive, but if we don't tell a developer, listen, if you want to do your resort, you need to be able to staff your, your people here. If they're able to just say, listen, we'll give you whatever the value is and you go do it somewhere, but. Does the Weber Housing Authority buy land and build houses? Like, how does that happen? Because as we've kind of talked about, the developers don't have an incentive.
Right. So the carrot and stick approach. Here are the four different options that a developer has to work with. And there's a fifth option built in here, unless otherwise negotiated by a development agreement. And let me get through each of these four options here. And after I've gotten through all four of them, I have that full discussion with you on how it works. Really, we're trying to create a snowball. With a lot of variety of options, rather than saying developer, you shall do X, Y, or Z. And one of the reasons why we're saying, we're not saying developer, you shall do X, Y, Z is because we're looking at the numbers. And to do a one acre development, for example. The numbers don't pencil to ask them to build anything, let alone set, set land aside. The, the return on investment that they're getting, you've got developers walking before they'll, they'll do any of that. Right to Commissioner Burton's point. That there is no financial value in. Mandating, I guess, to do that. Now, is that a good thing? Is that a bad thing? Well, maybe none of these developments happen. But if they don't happen, then there's still the creation of moderate income housing then falls back on the government and the taxpayer as a whole. So we're just trying to find ways to. Build some synergy. I hate that word, but I'm going to use it right here. Some synergy into this program. So number one. Well, let's look at C first. Workforce housing requirements, unless otherwise negotiated by development agreement, one or more of the following workforce housing requirements shall be provided by the developer. When I say one or more, the developer gets to choose. A dwelling units in an amount that is equal to or greater than 5% of the non-workforce housing units being developed shall be constructed and deed restricted. So. Let's just say this developer up here wants to do 20 units. Well, 5% of those 20 units needs to be. Or sorry, not 5% of the 20 units. A number equaling 5% of the 20 units that they're doing needs to be set aside for workforce housing. And constructed right under this one here. So one of, they get 20 lots. Well, now they get 21 lots so that on that, that last lot, they could build some kind of a workforce housing. Residential dwelling. If they choose that one. Fee and lieu is the next one down. In lieu of building affordable housing units, a fee equalling up to 2%. Of the dwelling units market value shall be paid for each dwelling unit constructed. This shall be implemented by a covenant recorded on title of each dwelling unit and shall be paid. At the time a building permit is issued or prior to the transfer of the property's title after the dwelling has been completed. One of the reasons we went down to 2% here is because instead of looking at. An economy of scale. Where they're doing, they're, they're building 20 lots, for example, that so that 21st lot isn't going to be that big of a deal. They're ordering their lumber and all that kind of stuff. It all comes at the same time. So we did 2% because it's just cash out of pocket. And cash out of pocket tends to be a lot more valuable for the housing authority, because they could turn that cash out of pocket into something tangible very quickly. As opposed to, you know, like, for example, a billable lot or a floor area. Both of those are just reserved spaces where they can then take fee and actually invest in those areas. Okay, so. 2% of the dwelling is market value. So basically, if you were to pick up one of these properties. You would come in for a building permit. You would pay your impact fees and then you would pay this 2% cost. Or. If, for example, the builder is not the one who's building the houses in that, in that development. When the property, the title of the property transfers, at that time, the cost will be paid as well. Okay, next one, billable lot. So in lieu of building affordable housing units, a lawfully subdivided lot or lots in a size configuration that is capable of supporting dwelling units. In an amount that is equal to or greater than 10%. Of the non-workforce housing units being developed shall be donated with stub utilities to the Weber Housing Authority for the purpose of meeting this requirement. This one, we went above, so 10%. Why did we go above? Because when we look at that 10%. 5% can be used to meet this requirement here. The other 5% the housing authority can cash out on and build the first 5%. Floor area in lieu, it's the same thing as billable lot area. It's just inside of a mixed use building.
So, so. I get this and I read that in the previous meetings packet, but my, I guess what I'm saying is, so you're saying they give them the money. So that workforce housing, or yeah, Weber workforce, Weber housing has.
Housing authority.
And then what? They go buy land?
Well. Maybe somebody's already given land, but yeah, they may go buy land. They do buy land. They've, they've got a few different projects that they do. They buy land, they build buildings, they, they have. Condominiums or they've got rental space inside of other buildings that they operate and maintain for. Low to moderate income housing. So they do have a number of units that they operate and manage as it is.
And this money, I'm guessing, just to make sure it's on the record here, that when these. When this happens in the valley and they decide to sell or give the amount of money over to Weber Housing. It's in a pot that has to be put back into Ogden Valley. It can't be used in some other place in Weber County.
Yes, in fact, let's see. Workforce housing location. The required housing units, lots or floor area provided for workforce housing may be located outside the proposed development, but no greater than one mile. From these specific, specific street designations or within a mile of a CB1, CB2 or CBR1 zone. Those are zones that are currently in our village areas. So basically. They've got to be in the valley and they can't be any greater than a mile away from a village node. And so even if the housing authority takes the money and, and implements. Whatever it is, buys property, builds on property that they've already acquired through another developer, it's got to be within a mile of that original development.
Right. So within that designation, one mile out of one of these seven zones. Or village areas. If they're waiting to collect all this money from the various. Resorts, developers, whoever. And in the meantime, the private landowners sell off their land. Then there's no land a mile from the village zone. Like how, like are. Are we consciously saying, you know, when, I don't know, Kobe branch or whatever else wants to come in, we say, whoa, wait a second, we need to do, we need to save. Land a mile from this village. For this thing that hasn't happened yet.
Yes.
And we're doing that?
Uh, I don't know if we're going to say that on Kobe yet, because.
I just took a, a, I just mean in general from the seven villages, are we actually saying, listen, wait, we've got to, we've got to say no to a, any, a parcel of land a mile from these places?
Yes. If, if this development is in the form-based village, so I, I would like to work with the commissioners to actually pull this out of form base and just make it generally applicable to any new development. But again, that's a strategy for the future. It's actually a strategy that we could look at maybe implementing over the next five years. But yeah, you, you've got it. So if they're, if they're devoted floor area or a billable lot, for example, the billable lot will be deed restricted. So there'll be a covenant that runs with the land that says this is for a very specific reason. If the developer is doing, for example, let's just say a billable lot. That billable lot, wherever it is, will be, will transfer hands and go to the housing authority. Or we'll have a deed restriction applied to it where essentially they can't do anything with it until the housing authority is ready to do something like that.
So Charlie, question on that. This Commissioner Burton, so 20 lot subdivisions somewhere. And there's no commercial, there's no employee housing there. You're just saying, one of those lots out of the 20, 5% has got to be donated to the housing authority. So this can be a gated community somewhere and you're saying, if you're going to have a gated community or whatever you want. Housing authority is going to own 5% of it.
Potentially, potentially, if that felt, if the developer chooses to go in that direction.
But they have to do one of those four.
Yep, one of the four, or, or work something out with the county commission.
Okay, I've just got a quick suggestion. If we've met the state requirements, just send them a quick report, we've met them. Then we look as a county of, how do we really achieve affordable housing? How do we reduce the cost of housing? So it's more affordable. Where we've met the state requirements that they want more affordable housing. That's why they've come up with this bullet list of stuff they want. But we can probably. Actually come up with some ways to reduce the cost of housing. So A, send in the report and we're done with the state for now. B, let's have a conversation sometime when we've had a little opportunity to prepare about how do we actually reduce the cost of housing? Because all we're doing here is shifting around. We're adding more regulations and shifting around the cost of housing and we're ending up with subsidized housing. Instead of really reducing the cost of housing for everybody. I'm thinking of a young family comes up, builds now a third of the cost of their mortgage that they're going to pay for over 30 years is now going to be for these regulations. That's non-productive. Reduce regulations, let the family have a better standard of living because they're not paying a third of their payment. For regulations that didn't make their life any better. I mean, those are some discussions we could have. How could we actually achieve? More affordable housing in the valley or the county? So I'd like to have that discussion sometime.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's exactly the intention of this conversation today. Is to discuss, right now, are we in compliance with state code? I think we are, just trying to get the warm fuzzies from you guys that you think we are too. And then after that, over the next three or four months, we work on maybe providing some updates to our plan. That gives us even more realistic opportunities to. Look for ways to implement moderate income housing.
Charlie, so we, we've talked about this. We talked about the, some of the things that they've asked us to, we, we've met the requirements. Have you gotten enough feedback from what you were looking for?
I think so. I'm going to send this information that I have here out to you guys. You could read it in a little bit more detail. And then you guys can, in your own time, over the next week or two, get me some of your own comments or thoughts back. This last page here. Timeline, you'll see a lot of this stuff was implemented by the adoption of the form-based zone. But that doesn't mean just because we adopted the four base zone, that we've actually implemented realistic strategies to create moderate income housing. That's yet to be determined, really. When one of these developers or multiples of these developers choose. To rezone to the form base and then obligate themselves that way to be required to, to do something. So. Okay, yeah, if you guys are good with that, I'll send it out to you by email. Let me know if you have.
Charlie, I had it along the terms of what Commissioner Burton was discussing, I have a question in regards to this moderate income housing. So go back up here to the top here. We, we talked about, so we implemented the transmitter, we, we. You know, it's, it's interesting because we all, the, the rule or economic rule that was discussed is the, is the supply and demand. We have lots of supply. The, if you have lots of supply, pricing is usually cheaper, right? Is lower. So you have a lower price, lots of supply. One thing that we've got up here in the valley is we, we have, I don't know, I've heard estimates somewhere around 6,000 people or homes. Is that correct? Do you, do you know the numbers? But it's around 6,000.
I think it's right about 6,000 homes.
Okay, so we have 6,000, but we have what, 16,000? And some of that will be used up, obviously, with dedications and whatnot, but 16,000 rights. Is that correct? Something like that, some, somewhere close. So we've got at least double the current amount. But we're, but nobody's developing because what? Cause, 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 cause costs are high and the, the people aren't, the people want a lot of money for it. So, so. Is there some benefit to whether this or looking at, you know. Having, having these clusters which we've done, we obviously have said that, you know, Wolf Creek. And, and having more homes in a smaller area, does that benefit us from the state perspective and from any moderate income? Without it being subsidized, just saying, hey, you know, you, you come put in a 200, you know, like the one. Like a really tight development, does that, does that give us a benefit? Is that what, is that kind of what I'm hearing?
What, what the state is trying to say with increased densities, rezone for new densities. Is to actually create new density. So rather than moving around density with TDRs, they do talk about TDRs, which gives some options, but. Right to Commissioner Burton's point and right to your point, Commissioner Schuman. You're only going to get housing prices to go down if you have. Greater supply than you have demand. Which the Ogden Valley has already clearly stated in the general plan, no new density. So somehow we've got to figure out how to encourage those TDRs to really fly off of those open space areas and into these villages. At higher densities in these villages. In a manner that actually provides a financial benefit to the developer, so he'll actually volunteer to do it. I just, I'm having a hard time seeing it. I think the way, the way that you actually do this in the Ogden Valley, and I'm not saying we should do this. I don't want anyone to hang me for saying it. But if you really want affordable housing in Ogden Valley, you just got to give people up zones. Let them build zones.
So you said?
Yeah, up zones. Yep, let them build apartments.
Oh. So basically rezoning. Is that what you're saying now? So, so I think that if, if I can, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I'll tell you what I think are some of the priorities. We don't really want to do, we don't want rezoning for more density. Although transfer development rights, I think are very important, meaning moving around the density, right? Taking those off like you mentioned. I think that, that's something very important. Accessory dwelling units. I, I think those are. A, a, a good idea. I think that's something we could, we could do more of. And have, have, you know. Not be too impactful with the, and kind of be in line with the, the way everybody is hoping to have. I think that we would, you know, as far as zoning goes, and as defined in the general plan, we'd like to see, you know, not. So I gotta be careful here, not rezoning, but moving, moving those densities that transfer, hitting that again, like I'm saying, if we could do some of that, I, I think that, that helps. Rezone for mixed use density goes along with that. The incentives. Uh, the incentives. What what do you mean by zoning incentives?
You've got to, so you've got to have something that you can, the carrot, that that'll attract a developer to do something, for example. One thing that we worked on uh, through the forum base is to say, if you do moderate income housing, it's not gonna be counted against your density. So rather than saying it's bonus density, we're just saying it's not gonna be counted against what you have. If you gave them a little bit more than that, to actually allow them to realize a a financial benefit to creating moderate income housing, that would be an incentive.
I I think that would be, bonus incentives are on the bottom of the things that are important, this is the way I would put it. Does anybody else agree or disagree? And I think those are the the last thing we really want to do. I think I'd rather see him use what we've got.
Hey, I I got a comment. Please, right, you can't get there from here, you can't get to low income housing unless you increase the density. You you just can't do it. And the idea that that uh, density is locked in the valley forever, the valley has spoken. We cannot change the general plan, that's erroneous. General plans are meant to be changed as circumstances change. There is no way, for example, with ADUs, now I do an ADU, you got to transfer development right into it. That didn't make it cheaper, that makes it just the same as a house. So we didn't make it cheaper, we made it more expensive. So there's two things, if we're gonna have truly affordable uh, housing in the valley, you got to increase density, you got to have the apartment houses or whatever to provide that kind of less expensive housing. And it can be in a cluster, you can reduce the impact, density isn't what we ought to be talking about, it's impact. And so anyway, you the, you just can't get there from here, we so play like you can get there, but you can't increase supply if you don't increase density or allow these apartments somewhere, and if the, each apartment unit has to have a development right, it can't, it can't be cheaper, it cannot be cheaper, just fact of life. So I got one, and I've, I'm sorry, I've had an emergency come up, I've gotta go. But on this uh, TDRs, I think my comment is, they ought to be, anybody can be a sender, anybody can be a receiver. That's the way it was originally envisioned, that's the market working. Otherwise, it's top-down dictating, and that will, that's doomed to failure. So I'm sorry, I gotta leave, thank you, oh.
Thanks, Commissioner Burton. I I I would, so I I I hear Commissioner Burton's point, I think it's a a good point that we do have to increase. We have to get more homes, right? But I I think my point earlier is that there's basically ten thousand homes out there that haven't been built yet. And if we want to keep things somewhat how they are, we will have to kind of follow that general plan output of putting things in certain areas. Uh, I I I think that we need to push, our 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 focus needs to be on trying to continue down that path. That's my my take on it, I don't think we should be trying to to increase the number of homes in as a total, we should try and keep that down. And and just keep pushing for for ideas that encourage development. For for lower, get to lower cost based on using the development rights that are already there.
So I think it's, I think it's appropriate, and I think that's what the general plan asks us to do.
So, so that's, that's my, that's, I I, you know, you know, multi-family residential allowances, we did that, I think that's I mean, that's, I think that's part of the 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 zones, you know, we got Eden, Wolf Creek, Nordic, those are kind of parts of those zones that we have some of that set aside, or we're planning to, so I think that's, so hopefully that that helps. Is there any other comments from planning commissioners? Anybody wanna add something?
Commissioner Johnson here, yeah, I just would love to read over this, uh, you know, I did my graduate degree and focused on affordable housing, so I'd love to chew on this, Charlie. Uh, this area of passion for mine, even though my career may not state that, but definitely passionate about creating this. Love to chew on this a little bit more, so yeah, I'd love to see it, it sounds similar to what Commissioner, Commissioner Ron there said.
Great, sounds great, it'll be in your inbox in just a few minutes. Any other thoughts, questions, comments?
I'll I'll have more comments and and feedback after I've read everything over.
Okay, sounds great. I'll get it all out to you guys. Um, if you can get your comments back to me within the next let's just say a week, I think that'll be appropriate. The state code technically says that we've got to have a report back to them by October second, I don't know if we're gonna meet that deadline. There's no penalty if we don't meet the deadline, it's just, uh, we don't get priority funding status until we've, we've submitted that, so there's no funding cycles going on until uh, uh, November, so I think we've got a little bit of time to finish this out.
Well, Charlie, instead of saying that, let's put a deadline on it. What day do you need feedback from everybody?
Let's go, uh,
If there's feedback to be had, it has to be done by this date, so you can have time to do your report.
Well, let's say, uh, it's six eighteen right now, so six eighteen on the twenty seventh, uh, Tuesday, the twenty seventh, how about that?
So next week, okay, all right. So if you have more comments or things that weren't made now, it needs to be done, turned in by the twenty seventh.
Charlie, can the housing authority buy density rights from people, and then if somebody wants to come and do that, they can support more density in that area?
They could, if that was within their purview, um, we can have a conversation with them uh, to maybe try and do that, that may be an opportunity actually to try and kill two birds with one stone.
If you wanted to put fifty houses over in Eden, low income, and then they go buy the density rights, and then the developer can build it and has an incentive.
Yeah.
With the money that they've collected.
That may be a worthwhile, uh, actually, there's a, there's a few different ways I could see that maybe even uh, happening, maybe uh, maybe TDRs are donated by a developer to the housing authority. So that they're not having to purchase it. I mean, the goal here is to try and keep the housing authority from having to, having to spend a lot of taxpayer dollars, they are, they are funded by taxes. But if we can work with maybe, uh, maybe we put another thing on that list where a a unit or two is donated to the housing authority, who can then roll that into a project that they're working on.
And incentivize the developer to build it, he could essentially get ten or fifteen units with the land he's brought and build it, and he'd be incentivized to do that now.
I like that idea, let me uh, let me take a
As you do that, the only thing you got to kind of figure out is, uh, what's the market value of that, I think it's a great idea, but somehow you gotta have your marketplace for a TDR similar to real estate, right, and figure out what is that actual value worth at that time?
I appreciate that, that's decent, that's a good, uh, good thought, okay, I'll, I'll write this down, and this won't be part of our the, what did Commissioner Burton call it, part A of this, but it'll definitely be part of, uh, the bigger discussion, part B over the next few months.
Can I add to that thought, uh, strain that I was at a recent community meeting, I don't know, a week or two ago? Um, and there was the discussion, somebody stood up from the audience and mentioned, um, the community was, you know, all upset about growth, and the person said that the community members should think to put their, you know, in a nicer way, but to put their money where their mouth is, and that if they wanted to all donate, you know, money to create a fund that people could buy TDRs, and in this respect, she, this person was saying like basically to squash them to like, keep them from being developed. Um, but I could honestly see, um, kind of in a nonprofit or a, um, like a community forum of a fund that people could donate to, if the, if the incentive was to build housing for teachers, firefighter, you know, like the the workforce that you were talking about adding into the language of instead of just affordable housing, but also just for our community service members, um, I could imagine that being something that that some members of the community might want to donate to, whether donate TDRs or donate financially to build up a fund to maybe be able to you know, it's it's an incentive to say, hey, listen, we'd like to be able to put some housing for teachers so that our schools maintain high-quality educators. Instead of calling necessarily affordable housing.
Yeah, I like it. Public employee housing, I don't know if anybody loves that anymore, it's still government, government.
We can play with the wording of that.
I like it, yeah, and that's, that's exactly right, Janet. This is one of the challenges, a lot of people don't want to see every, you know, sixteen thousand units developed. But at the end of the day, nobody bought those rights except for those who own them, and so putting your money where your mouth is, I think is is a, an appropriate statement, even though maybe it can be said more nicely, I'm not sure. Great, okay, I'll get this guy, I'll get this out to your uh, email inboxes shortly. Thank you, guys, that's, I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
All right, so transferable development rights, sending and receiving areas discussion, I am I, I'll, I'll, I'll chime in before we get started, I guess. Commissioner Burton mentioned his comments, and I I appreciate them, I I think they've got some some merit in the, in that we should try and keep this as open as possible. But I I would differ in that I feel that we should uh, try and put a guiding hand to it, but as minimal as possible, meaning if we can if we can have an area that we're trying to maintain open space and and push to the out, then we should have that. I think that is a good direction, so there's my two cents on it, is that there should be some guidance on it, but we should try and allow the market as best as possible to 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 make this work.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, can I get a little bit of history on TDRs, because I was thinking that they'd kind of always been around, but from some previous conversations and meetings, it sounds like it's something that you guys recently either developed or implemented in order to try to create the general plan with open space and stuff, is like, is there a little bit of history I can get?
Yeah, lots, lots of history, but I'll, I'll, I'll keep it brief.
Yeah, yeah, let me give a, give us a brief, please, on that, Charlie.
So ninety-eight, uh, Ogden Valley general plan talked about TDRs to do exactly what we're trying to do, essentially consolidate where the houses are built so that we can keep open spaces open. Uh, that was back in nineteen ninety-eight. There, I think it was oversold as a silver bullet on how to save the future of the valley. Uh, and the reason why I think it was oversold is because for TDRs to work, successful TDR programs put an incentive into the transfer, in other words, make it so that the developer realizes a better return on investment, not just a zero-sum gain and not a drain. If you can conceptualize the economic nature of TDRs, I think I've mentioned this before to you guys. Taking a three-acre development right and turning it into a thirteen-hundred-square-foot condominium, there isn't an equal economic uh, transfer there, and there's definitely not a gain. And so we're trying to figure out how to help a developer realize a game moving from one unit per three acres to one unit on thirteen hundred square feet. That's why I think it's, it's a, it was sold as a silver bullet where it, it really doesn't make sense economically. However, that said, there are landowners who do not intend to and do not want to develop their property. But they're gonna leave the option to develop it open for the future unless they can have some uh, financial compensation to remove those rights. And so it is worth it to them to uh, receive five, ten thousand dollars per development, right? Uh, to retire them off of their property, and so we will see those landowners making some transfers. We also, we know that we've got at least one developer in the valley, if not others, who are actually finding a huge economic boon on selling larger lot sizes, ten uh, ten-acre lot sizes. There are some ten-acre lots that are going for more value than, um, ten-one acre lots. Uh, and so that uh, kind of development style can turn into a really good transfer, because uh, they see a a, an economic boon and built in creating ten-acre lots where they can move those other units off the three other units that they have on that property and move them into a village center, so essentially that is almost a three-to-one transfer at that point.
Yeah, that's, it it's, it's, don't hold me to this language, because it's, I'm not a hundred percent sold on this idea, but there is a little bit in my head where I feel like it's a little double-dipping. If you have a property where, you know, you're gonna sell ten-acre lots uh, for a house, um, and it's gonna be a multimillion-dollar sale, you know, that's, that's a lot more coming in than you'd get for a two fifty, well nowadays, probably five fifty, six fifty, uh, for a single-family home on a, you know, whatever, the smaller lots probably, so and then the idea that you then can maximize your profit by selling lower density, which is great, but um, but then keeping the rest of your density rights, taking them and getting to do a whole other project. I again, not fully sold on this line of thought, but it does have a little bit of a scent of double-dipping, getting, getting extra, you know, um, whereas if the valley wants not only no new density, but you know, people wish there was less, although you can't, you know, nobody wants to take anything away, um. If there was, I'm not saying to retire, to not, you know, obviously, I'm I'm definitely for a transfer development rights, I think that's how the general plan works. But there's, you know, it's not binary, there would be other things of maybe retiring a small percentage of them, right? Um, so that they, you know, great, you can make multi-millions of dollars per large lot sold over here, um, and you can take some of those development rights that you're not using in order to make those large lots, but then maybe retiring a small percentage so that we have less density.
Yeah, you uh, you're speaking the same language that I think Commissioner Jenkins uh, is speaking, and he he has a hard time. He, I think he used the word double-dipping. He has a hard time with that concept. What I explained to him, and I think where the other few commissioners are, uh, is this, we can envision, let's just say this green space here, if you own the property, if you're online, you own the property, I'm sorry, I'm not pointing out anybody's specific property, I'm just choosing a spot on the screen. This green area here, we've identified um, as a good area to preserve as, uh, generally speaking, open spaces. And a developer comes in and says, well, I could make quite a bit of money on large lots here. Um, and make it even better, because I could then transfer the ones that I don't develop over into, for example, the the four, or excuse me, the the park area. Either, either that option is available to him, or he looks at whatever the best financial outcome is, right? And if the, if it's a better financial outcome just to build all of them in place, then that's the antithesis of what the general plan is trying to get it to do, and so what I told Commissioner Jenkins is don't fault the businessman for being a good businessman. Uh, and I I say that a little bit tongue-in-cheek, um, but the reality is, we're trying to figure out how do we help a landowner, not just one developer or a a couple others, but any landowner realize the benefit of not building those dwelling units on their farm, but allowing them to be realized somewhere else.
Right, and I, I'm a supporter of the general plan, so I I get that we need TDRs in order to make sure that we have open space areas and we, you know, support the village areas for the density, and I I'm I'm a supporter of that, I'm just thinking that there's not just two ways to do it, you know?
Yeah, oh, agreed, so finding multiple options and multiple ways to do it, that's another that's a, another part of this equation that we've got to fill in. Allowing TDRs or or, let's, how do I, enabling TDRs to be the future of the valley. We've got to have more than one way to do it, we've got to diversify our resources, uh, otherwise, it's not gonna get done, it's been, what are we, twenty twenty-two? So we're looking at twenty-four years, it's been twenty-four years since TDRs has been floated. Uh, at least formally floated in a general plan, and very little has been done about it. And I think there's a reason for that.
So, so just, just in general, on TDRs, uh, the, the goal of the TDR is to enable growth without increasing density.
That's right.
Right? So, so the purpose of this, of the reason the general plan, everybody, is is a way to say, okay, so we recognize that everybody has land right, or home, you know, we talked about the bundle of sticks in the, in that meeting on the video, or whereas a, as a landowner, you have a a group of of rights, and 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 your rights are that you can develop this much based on, on what what that, what came with that property, and there's only so much you can regulate. Correct?
That's right.
So what we're trying to do is find a balance there, because at the end of the day, it doesn't So what we're trying to do is find a balance there, because at the end of the day, it does all everything that we try and do. We're infringing on a landowner's right. If he wanted to come in and build, you know, if somewhere where we haven't designated as an okay zone to build, technically, he has every right to take and say, let's say, I don't know where we've got zoned open space, but on this map we're looking at. He wants to come in and he wants to buy that area and build a multifamily huge area that's that's all hub zone, right, or whatever, or a or a moderate income zone, right? He wants to build that. For whatever reason, that's what he wants to do. And we're we're sitting here telling him, no, that's not okay, but as a legal fight, he could have and go to the go to this courts and go through and push it uphill. Obviously, it would be an uphill battle. He has every right to do that. Is that, would you say that's correct?
Um, sort of. Let let me add one more.
He can say, he can say, okay, I want to rezone this so it fits. So he can go through that whole process now. He can say, okay, the commissioners are going to turn that down this year, but they're going to get, there's going to be a new commissioner next year or two years, three years, four years from now, we can change that. That that can be changed in the future. So the goal of the TDR, as we see it, is to try and say, okay, we know this can happen. We don't want to see that happen because that it's a losing battle for our ultimate goal. We're trying to create an incentive because we really don't have much of a stick to make this make our our outcome be what we're looking for. Would you say that's pretty accurate of what we're trying to accomplish here with TDRs?
Absolutely. Yes. Let me when I when I say mostly on that one statement. When it comes to the bundle of sticks, this is something a lot of strong property rights advocates would disagree with, but the Supreme Court has made it very clear. When it comes to the bundle of sticks, it's essentially the zone that limits what can and cannot happen within those bundles of sticks. Now, that's one of the reasons why the Supreme Court has said because zoning is in direct derogation of free use of property or property rights, zoning must be interpreted. If there's any way to see ambiguity in in zoning code or or whatever, it's got to be interpreted interpreted in favor of the landowner. But essentially, the zone that you see, the colors that you see on the map here, excuse me, does show you what your rights are. And so in the AV three zone, you've got the right to build one dwelling unit per three acres. So if you were to come in and you were to say, I got three acres here, I want to build multifamily here. You haven't purchased that right. That right does not run with that land. You've got to go to the county commission. You got to ask for an upzone. And once the county commission has granted an upzone, at that point, they have essentially given you more sticks to put in your bundle of sticks that equals your ability to do your multifamily.
So my point in this, Charlie, that I want to make is that that, like you said, so you're not, when you buy it, you buy it in this, your where your pointer is, you buy it in an AV three, right? That AV three, you have the right to build a home every three acres, right? And and whatever else is associated with that zone, right? That's what you, that's what you bought now. But I also have the right that I can go to the county commission and I can ask for an upzone and get more or of whatever it is I'm looking for. And 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 because sentiments change and are, you know, the county commission changes. For example, let's say that someone came in and they said, I want to build the most beautiful whatever park, and I want to bulldoze all the homes in this area, and I bought them. You know, nobody would really have too much of a heartburn with that. I think that's great. Well, that we think that's great. Well, in a couple of years from now, we might go, well, no, we really like multifamily homes because they they really bring in the people. We like community. So we can change in ten years and like that. So we really don't have any fixed settings. We have a plan that can be changed at almost any time.
That's right.
Is that correct? And so so as we look at these things, you know, whether or not a a zone as it is now and in the future, we we really have to consider, well, what we're looking to build currently or what's before us or what's coming. Is this a fair assessment? We have to look at, hey, does this fit in what our general plan is? And where so if someone comes in with an AV three, you know, and they want to change it to, you know, the MV one or a CB two, we have to say this fits or not. That's literally what like those 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 proposals are. Is right, is they change all the time. So there's no, there's no firm and fixed anything. And the hard part about TDRs, so going back to that, is even if we implement TDRs and we landlock something or we say we've landlocked something, that can change too, correct?
That's that's absolutely correct.
We have to keep this in mind that all we're trying to do with the TDR is an incentive for the future. And it's the easiest way to do it because we really don't have another tool. Is that correct? Or we have some others, but very not maybe not quite as powerful or as driven by the general plan.
That's right. That's that's a really good assessment, a great way to put it. So, yeah, I guess another shorter way to say that is nothing's permanent, even when it comes to zoning and development. And so we do the best that we can to try and make things predictable and create a predictable future, but at the end of the day, you things happen.
Yeah. So so we say that TDRs are allowed in these zones current. Well, as things grow out, that's going to be adjusted, and that's just the way things are going to go. So as we look at things, we really need to keep that in mind, that this is not something that, you know, nothing that we do is going to be a permanent fixation to it as much as we really could want to or try to. It don't, it's really up to, the only thing we hold constant is like the the property rights, you know, we always kind of, as I said, we go back to their right because that's what's fixed, we've given to them in the Constitution, so.
And 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 taxes.
Taxes, well, I might have spent a little bit of time, too much time on that, but I I wanted to get that out there that, hey, like, the hard part about what we do is there's really no permanency in it. It's not, there's nothing that it can't is it can't be changed or isn't, you know, the only thing that really holds things back from changes in economic, you know, doesn't make sense, you know, doesn't make sense for me to come in and buy all this ground and tear the houses up because I just want a big, big open field. No, not really. I'll go find it elsewhere. So that's the only thing that really kind of drives the drives the ship, I guess.
Yeah, you're right. And and you don't want it to be permanent. Because if somebody, let's just say, somebody comes in and has a really, really great idea that has unanimous support from everyone, you don't want to be locked that have something like that locked out. And so that's that's why the system is what it is. Yeah. That's a it's a great way to state it.
So so we're looking at TDRs. Again, I think we just, we want to make sure it's a it it we transfer them into the right areas as best we can that does create an incentive for those, because the goal with the TDR is to get development done responsibly or in the in the ultimate goal of the the general plan, which is more open space and and less less big, less density, right? I guess, but but you have to have density somewhere because they've already got the rights. So where do we put it? What do we do with it?
That's right. You got it. You got it.
Okay, I have a question. Hold on. Sorry. So the right, though, the TDR is not a document piece of paper like a deed that somebody has in their lockbox, right? This is, this is just, I happen to have three acres of land, and that lets me build either one house or three houses or whatever, depending on my zone.
So that's that's a, I think that's a great point, Commissioner Wampur, because that's not something I don't think we have established yet. I think it's something that we've talked about in that we want to look at getting into some sort of system of exchange for
Right, yeah.
In the past, it's been done, from what I understand, it's been done, but it's mostly been done by like handshake deals that, hey, Mr. Developer, when you do this, you've got to not build on these, but you can build on these. So it was a transferable development done there, but not. And so some of the goals that we've been over in the past has been that we want to eventually get some kind of formal plan established with how these will work. Is that right, Charlie? Is that right? We're trying to work on that.
Yes, and and I've done a lot of research on this. I've looked at probably dozens of TDR ordinances, what other people are doing in other communities. Giving an example, something that we learned at a conference recently is the city of Mappleton in Utah County. They've got a TDR program. Now, their TDR program, probably one of the most successful TDR programs in the state, if not, if not the greater region. But they're also offering a one to five and a one to seven transfer ratio where, you know, if you transfer in one unit, you get to build seven or one unit to five. And in the the five and the seven just depends on which area of the community, which receiving area they're trying to incentivize development to move into the the most. And so that really gets those things moving. But to answer Janet's question, what they did in the city of Mappleton is they actually created a certificate. It's essentially like a deed. I'm concerned because we are talking about this, this is it's it's real property. It's not physical property. It's paper property that has a financial value that goes with it. It's it's almost a a new form of currency. I don't want to be responsible for being the county mint and try and guard against people creating their own or counterfeiting their own certificates. And so we've gone a little bit of a different direction. We're just looking at creating a covenant that will run with the land, and the covenant is with that private landowner. The covenant says, we hereby either, what are we looking at? We're at a transfer, transfer development, receiving parcel. So we're receiving parcel parcel. We are receiving density rights from another parcel. That other parcel would have a covenant that says sending parcel. And we agree that the units that are being received can be built here. Or if it's sending parcel, we agree that the units that are sending are not going to be built here. And then we've got a ledger that runs with the property. This covenant runs with the property. Anybody who buys the property will be able to see that regardless of whatever it's colored on the zoning map, the zoning map doesn't matter anymore because what matters is what their final balance is for development rights. So this runs with the property. Now, we've got this to Trevor's point on nothing is ever permanent. We've got a little footnote, the fine print at the bottom that says this is an estimate. These are theoretical development rights. This is as if you were to come in and just develop your property now. You could potentially get this amount of units out of that property. But what if the county commission changes the zone? Maybe it's not an AV three zone. Now it's an now it's an R one zone, one acre residential property. Well, if we take the one acre, now we're tripling the density. And so if there were four for the base density, well, if we recalculate that that base density then turns to twelve, right? Or, yeah, tripling twelve. And then these units being the reduction, your bottom line turns into a different number. And so that this is not a permanent thing, but it is as permanent for the zone that the property is in, as long as that zone remains there.
Okay, so hold on. So you're saying that right now in Ogden Valley, we do this. It runs with the land. So if I want, so let's go with Osprey. I buy whatever it is, six hundred acres, and I'm able to build whatever it was, two hundred homes, and I only want to put sixty so that I can I I I have those development rights from that land I bought in Osprey, and I can move them somewhere else. And that I'll deal with later, but right now it came with the land of Osprey. Do we not? Okay, so that's what we currently do is what I'm understanding you're saying. What I'm wondering is what about like, so that lady who stood up and said buying and squashing, like, if somebody has ten acres or nine acres, we'll go with nine in Huntsville, and he doesn't want to develop it at all except for his one house. You're saying that right now we cannot, he doesn't have the right to sell those two other development rights to someone because he doesn't want to develop them, but but it's a matter of running with the land. He'd have to buy his land. He doesn't want to sell his land, but he's not going to build, but he'd like to make money off of the fact that he's not going to build.
So that can happen right now. The government, Weaver County as a government, does not have a mechanism set up to do that. However, the county doesn't need to create a zone or a land use ordinance to do that. If the county just said we've got a million bucks to invest in. So what you're talking about buying them and squashing them, that that program.
Hold on, but I'm not even, it doesn't have to be buying and squashing. It can be, it can be a developer saying, I need to come up with twenty TDRs to do my thing. I don't really want, I have, I have the land I want to put them on, but I need, I want, I need twenty more rights. So that person decides to go out into the community. He doesn't want the land hawk marked all over the valley. He just wants their rights. And he talks to people who say, I'm not going to develop my land. I'll sell you the rights that I'm sitting on because I have no plan to develop them. And then you can take those rights, those, you know, once you become an agent, you're twenty to go do your thing in the land that you already wanted to put it on. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, are we not doing that at all?
We, if if they have the form base, the FB zone, they can do that right now.
Okay, that's new, though. So the form based zone is new as in like, you know, weeks ago.
Uh huh. Well, no, 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 the form based zone was adopted in January earlier this year. But you're right, you're right. Relatively speaking, it's a new, it's a new.
Okay. All right. But so so as of the form based zone, they can prior, that's not how, it was always just buying land and then maybe moving the rights.
That that that's right, with one exception, and that is for accessory dwelling units. We cut our teeth on TDRs with accessory dwelling units where if you're going to do a detached accessory dwelling unit, you've got to go buy another, you either need to have double the the acreage that is required by the zone for one home. You'd have double, or you need to go buy a TDR from somewhere else.
So but without a document, how was that happening? And how did we keep track of squat, like, saying like, well, that one's dead and in that property because it was moved? How do have we kept track of that?
We use this document.
So we've always had, okay, so we've had this, and that includes not buying the land, just the TDR.
That's right.
Okay.
It's a covenant that says we've received one extra or a covenant that says we've reduced our base density by one.
And this is with the government somewhere so that if that person then goes and wants to build an accessory dwelling unit, we can say, no, 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 you no longer have the ability to.
That's right. Yep, and this is recorded on title. So if someone else were to buy the property, they would get that at their closing.
Okay, so if they buy the six acres and they think, oh, I can put a mother in law suite, and they're like, nope, actually, you cannot. Okay.
You got it.
Okay.
Okay, so that that's actually a really great line of questioning because as we look at the bigger TDR program, that's how we intend to execute it. Now, it's a by right thing. And so if, for example, right now, you want to do an accessory dwelling unit and you've got double the acreage, you can do that right now. Or if you've got, want to do an accessory dwelling unit, you've got three acres, you can transfer as a by right, doesn't go to the planning commission, doesn't go to the county commission, is just staff looking at does it meet the criteria? Yes or no? If it does, we record the document or the the multiple documents and and they pull a building permit at that point. Okay. That may very well be how the bigger TDR program works. My anticipation and the way that I'm designing it right now is there's at the very least going to be a overlay zones or rezone process that has to happen. And through that rezone process, the planning commission and the county commission can take their time with every single property and deliberate on, is this a good sending area or is this a good receiving area? There's one option that we can move forward, move towards, or a second option we can move towards is doing something similar to what we did with accessory dwelling units or with the form based zone and say, we've already vetted where the polygons of sending areas are and of receiving it, where the receiving areas are. Therefore, if they're in the polygon of receiving, then they can receive. If they're in the polygon of sending, then they can send. And they could do that as a by right deal. And so it it really kind of depends on how comfortable you guys are moving forward and saying, here's our overlay zone. We're pretty comfortable with the the boundaries that we have here. If somebody wants to rezone or do a new overlay zone or whatever, they can come in and they ask legislatively to do that. But absent that, anybody who has an overlay that says they're sending area, they get to send, and there's not going to be a question of whether or not they do send. It's just, do they check the boxes that we write in the code? Okay, so though, when you're thinking about the balance of how this ordinance should work, those are the two options you've got available to you, and I'll walk you through which option I think would be most prudent.
Okay, but I just want to clarify again, so that when you say in one of those options, the latter option, you were saying if they're already approved for it, then it's not a question. They can just, if they're in a send, they can send, and if they're in a receive, they can receive. But they're still going to come and record with you, right? So that you can mark it as this is. So that you can market as this is no longer a developable, full piece of land.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I'm.
Just wouldn't come to us to vote on, is that what you're saying?
That's right. I'm, I'm emphasizing that it'll be an administrative buy right thing that doesn't even go to the planning commission or the county commission. Essentially, it's one of your, if we create, uh, for example, this map over here. Um, the green areas are areas that are currently open and may be valuable for protecting. So if we say this map is now, all these green areas are now part of the uh, TDR overlay zone for sending areas. Anyone who lives in here, we are handing them a new stick in their bundle of sticks and that stick is the right to sell their development right. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, and then in these uh, white areas, or actually, let's just not focus on the white areas, let's focus on a village area. We already know from the form based zone that they have a right to receive. And so if they went, once they've rezoned to that form based zone, we've given them the state that says you have the right to bring more density into your property. So essentially, we're creating new rights by doing this.
Are we taking any rights away? Like if we're saying you're, so if someone's in a sending zone, but they wanted to receive. Are we, what, is there a negative side of this?
Well, right now, we don't have anything in our ordinance that says they can receive unless they're doing an accessory dwelling unit or they're in a form based zone. So in essence.
They could have already sent before, but they'd have to sell. No, they've already been able to send it. So what, what's the difference?
I see. When you say they could have sent, they could have sent into a form based area, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if I can sell my development right. Yeah, without selling my land, I could have done it now or I could do it if we adopt this thing you want us to adopt. But what's the difference for them?
So it, it, it wouldn't be different. It'd be a matter of where they can send it to.
Okay.
So it'd be a matter of who's, who's purchasing it and where that's located.
Okay.
Okay.
And this is because we want to try to really drive the growth into the villages.
That's right.
Okay.
Now, keeping in mind that as you're thinking through this program, let's just say you have property in here. If you want to build there, uh, the easy answer is that you get to build there. If you want to sell your development rights, you get to sell. So you've got two options if this overlay zone is applied to your property. But one thing that you can't do is you can't move density into there, into ascending area. Okay? The white area on the map is what I'm contemplating being a hybrid, both sending and receiving. I don't want to point over here because we've worked on a Nordic area plan, but let's point over, I don't know, let's point over here. Here's a white area and if you own property in there and you're colored white or whatever other color we decide to, to color it. Um, you could either send or receive. So you could send into a village area or any other area, any other white area. Or you could receive from a green area or any other white area.
Sorry, hang on one second. So when you, before, when you said if you're, if we do this and you're in a sending area, what you couldn't do is add.
You couldn't receive.
You couldn't receive. If I'm not mistaken, you're saying unless you buy the additional prop, like a double property, right? So unless, if I'm on a one house for three acres, I can't receive unless I buy another three acres and then I can build my other house.
You mean an accessory dwelling?
Yes, an accessory dwelling, yeah.
In those circumstances, someone who's already got a lot here who wants to move an accessory dwelling unit in. That's the only circumstance in which they'd be able to receive. You're right.
Okay, so they can receive for an accessory dwelling unit, but they cannot receive for anything else.
That's right. Now, we can always, we can always tackle the accessory dwelling unit question as well and say, you, even in a sending. If you're in a sending area, you can't even receive an accessory dwelling yet. I would suggest we don't do that if we're trying to create affordable housing or moderate income housing. I would say if they've already got a house and they're going to do an accessory, allow them to do it. So plenty complicated though, but you asked, you asked all the right questions. Okay, let me show you what that looks like in writing. Okay. So we would have an overlay zone for ascending parcel or sending area, which would be a TDR dash S overlay zone. A receiving parcel would be uh, in a TDR dash R. Or if you're in that white area that's not colored, it would be a TDR dash SR, sending or receiving. So in a send, for, for sending area, a residential development right may be transferred from a lot or parcel thereafter called ascending lot or parcel. In the TDRS or the TDRSR overlay zone. Likewise, a receiving parcel, residential development right may be transferred to a lot of parcel thereafter called, uh, called a receiving lot or parcel. In the TDR dash R overlay zone or the TDR dash SR overlay zone. Sending within the same TDR overlay zone, a residential development right may be transferred from a lot of parcel in the TDR dash R overlay zone. To another TDR dash R overlay zone. So if you're in a receiving area, an area designated only for receiving, you can transfer between your receiving area. So let's say, I know there's a lot of questions about where uh, John Lewis should and can be able to send uh, his development rights. Within the Wolf Creek Village, Wolf Creek Village is a receiving area. Um, he maybe, if this gets adopted, can send those rights into Old Town Eden, Newtown Eden, or maybe even Nordic. Um, under this rule here.
So it would make him able to send from a receiving area to a different receiving area.
That's right.
As well as be able to continue to receive because it's a both situation.
That's right.
So what I didn't understand is the white zone area, like when we have the form based zone. I would imagine the, the village areas are going to be the receiving areas, right? Um, we're trying to build those densities. So where is the both going? Is that within villages? Where is it?
Yeah, so let's, let's look at a village uh, briefly. Okay, so we already know mixed use commercial, that'll be receiving. Um, all of these colors get you smaller lot sizes, therefore all of these colors are receiving, including the light green, which is one acre. But once you get over here to the dark green. So all of these will be receiving, the dark green would be sending, right? Well, let's go back over to, so that's a village area, sorry. So you can imagine, I tried to cut all of that out from both of these village areas here. But let's go up to one of these white areas that is not inside of a village area.
Uh, give me a point of reference, what am I looking at?
Um, this is forty one hundred.
Is this the golf course down there?
No, no, golf course is right over here in Wolf Creek.
Okay.
Here we are, this is forty one hundred north, it goes up uh, uh, North Ogden Divide.
Okay.
Comes down, this is the portion that hasn't been constructed yet, but is roughed out.
Oh, is this like the bridges and that whole eagle area? Okay.
Yep, so let's just imagine for a second, just in case anybody online is concerned, I'm talking about the bridges. Um, let's imagine that nothing exists there and there is no development agreements, Wolf Creek Development Agreement or anything like that that applies to the property. Wipe out everything, it's just whatever the zoning is right now. It's white, so they could both send or receive. So I've got a parcel there, let's just say I've got a three acre parcel, I've got the right to build one unit on that parcel. And I'm thinking, I don't want to, I don't want to build on that parcel for whatever reason. I could sell that one right and therefore thereafter that parcel remains uh, empty of residential development rights. That doesn't mean that I can't put like a barn there or something like that. So there's still the rights that are running with that land. But I can't put a residential development right on there. And I've sold from this person to this person over here. And then ten years from now, my, my situation changes. And now I want to actually build a home on this parcel here. Well, then I would go to whoever has an extra right and I would buy it from them and I would put it on the parcel. But maybe I want to subdivide it and make uh, uh, three one acre parcels. Unless there's a village zone, a village area zone that governs otherwise, I could go buy three rights. Come in, subdivide according to the county's rules, I'd still have to meet um, minimum zoning requirements for the one acre. I could put three one acre parcels here. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make, yeah.
Okay, now, what the general plan talks about is, let's just say, for example. Let's just go to this, well, I don't know, let's go to Browning Ranch, that's an easy one. Here we are in the Browning Ranch area here. And it's all three acre uh, property. The general plan says, in the areas that we have designated as sending areas, or at least uh, areas that are, what's the word I'm looking for, right? Um, areas that are most appropriate to be sending areas. If the landowner still chooses to develop, the general plan says that we should change the rules to only allow them to build cluster subdivisions. So even if they did choose to develop. If we follow, strictly follow the uh, uh, language of the general plan, we would say you can still do it, but you got to cluster your development. In other words, in the AB three zone, you have to leave to sixty, I think it's, it may be eighty percent of the land in open space, sixty or eighty percent, I can't remember which one of this. Thereby still creating open space in these areas that are valuable for preservation. Now, I don't know if the county commission is going to buy up on that as a mandate, but that's what the plan suggests we should be moving towards. Okay, any questions to this point?
I think, one thing I'm worried about is, do we have a master list, a spreadsheet? Um, some sort of, of every single. I, I know that they're not really like, again, at these documents, but this, these development rights, do we have a list of Farmer Brown has a ten acre ranch and therefore has the potential for X amount of development rights based on his current. Like, do we have a list so that we can know where we are? Cause I'm, I'm, I'm feeling like this is a really easy scenario of you know, I mean, everybody's talking about no new development and, and, and right now the developers are being really great about, we're, we're doing transfers, we're not doing new development. But it's pretty messy in terms of right now, I guess you have a document of who has sold, but we don't have a document of everybody else that has them, that may or may, you know, that's out there.
That's right. So who has them um, is going to be a different question. Uh, and we're, we can't do that evaluation upfront just because there's thousands of parcels. It's going to have to be based on when they're willing to sell and when they have a willing buyer. At that point, the, the buyer would bring in uh, the, the information on the parcel that they're buying it from and then the information on the parcel that they're sending it to. Um, and so let me just show you, we've done a few accessory dwelling units already. Um, and so here we've got transfer, transferable development agreement on this parcel and we've got a transferable development agreement on this parcel. If you click the more information, it brings the document up. It shows you their ledger here.
Mm-hmm.
And so here's where your master list is. If you're looking for like a, a master spreadsheet, we could probably, as we're collecting these. Um, enter that information in, we could probably find a way to automate it. Um, I'd have to work with IT on that, but.
Also for infrastructure of knowing like, where are we now in terms of we had ten thousand? You know, development rights that we were theoretically talking about within our meetings. And now we have forty seven hundred, you know, just having some sort of knowledge of where are we within the growth of the valley, when do we tap out? When is, you know, because at the moment, it seems like only when that last transfer sale happens and it comes into your office and you record it. Are we going to have any concept of, are we, this is it, this is, but the valley's tapped, it's done.
Yep, that's, that's actually one, another one of the reasons why when you open this document. Um, we've got the fine print at the bottom that says, uh, we calculate, calculated this to the best of our ability. But as, let's just say it's twenty, let's say it's a three hundred acre parcel, just for the sake of easy math. As you get closer and closer to that last development right, you've got a hundred development rights on there. When you get down to ten, when this number gets down to ten out of a hundred, that should give us a clue that we need to be paying very close attention. Uh, to how many they have left because let's just say we, they had a hundred or we said they had a hundred based off of base density. But as we get, you know, somewhere between ten and twenty, we'll start taking a much closer look at the property and realize, whoa. Here's an area here that is completely unbuildable, it's a cliff edge or it's the middle of the lake or something like that. And that wasn't included in the original calculation. The fine print says that the county has the right to recalculate at any point in time.
Okay.
Now, the, the trouble spot there is if the county did allow them to transfer more than they technically had the right to do. Then at that point, I think it's a foregone conclusion. And so it is incumbent on us to make sure we're paying very close attention.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see, um, one other thing that I wanted to make sure that you guys um, wrapped your head around in this conversation here. It's the idea of land bank. I'm going to read this to you and then I'm going to tell you what it means. Any lot of parcel in the same planning area may be used to bank residential development rights. To later be transferred to land within the same planning area. In this case, any lot of parcel in the same planning area may be a receiving and sending parcel. However, at no time shall any residential development right be developed on the lot of parcel unless otherwise in compliance with its land use code. So what that means is, let's go back to our map. Let's say you are in this green area and you've got the opportunity to buy a bunch of development rights from Browning Ranch, for example, pick on them again. You could transfer them here, but because you are in a sending area, not receiving area, the county wouldn't allow you to build what you've transferred in that place, you're just holding on to it. And then you've got a market or you've got at least your hand on a supply. That then somebody in this area here or somebody in this area here could buy from you. Does that make sense?
Okay, so you're saying even if you own in a sending area, you can buy rights and just bank them. You cannot buy them and then add density or build, you can just buy them as a currency and hang on to them.
That's right.
And then they'd have to go to a receiving area.
That's right. In, in the event, for whatever reason, this landowner who, who took three hundred units and put it on their half acre parcel. In the event they can't find buyers, well, you got open space and you got someone who spent a lot of money for no reason. So I mean, that's the risk that they take in getting into the, the TDR uh, transfer game.
It's just an investment.
It's.
Some go well, some go wrong, okay.
That's exactly right. The real estate investing is, is risky business, not as risky as some, but it's still risky. But what that also means is you could be outside of the valley floor, maybe you're up here on the mountainside that you know you'll never be able to develop on. And you could transfer to that piece, hold on to it until somebody else buys from you. The reason why I think this is an important component of a TDR program is because it enables more landowners. Maybe someone buys a piece of property that they definitely cannot develop on, they buy it at tax sale. Um, it's an illegal parcel, they can't develop on it. That landowner may have the equity available to him. Um, or the liquidity available to him to go out and buy a lot of TDRs. And so they are becoming a banker at that point, just by use of that property. Now, I don't want the county creating certificates that just go into the ether that nobody ever remembers. That's why I'm suggesting we do it with the recorded documents that run with the land. Cause we'll be able to keep our eye on it forever and always after that. Um, but it gives more people the opportunity to get into the banking scenario. Where then they have all this stuff available for others to, to buy.
So, but you just said if somebody buys an undeveloped land, do they have to have land to buy a development right?
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not like I can just, you know, I'm an overzealous eighteen year old and I decide I want to get into the TDR business and invest, you know, money in it. Um, you have to own land first.
Yes.
Okay.
Under this program, other TDR programs work differently. Like I mentioned, uh, city of Mapleton, they're creating certificates. I just, I, I, I feel like there's too much risk in. If this is, becomes a hot market, there's going to be so much happening that we're never going to be able to keep track of all these things that are not recorded to property. It's just, they're going to be out in the wind. And so not only just for the sake of not knowing where these units could potentially go in the future. But the risk of counterfeit units, I'd rather just say, it's a recorded document, it's got a signature of a member of staff. Um, and we know when it got recorded and we added it to the map, therefore it can't be forged.
What type of land do they have to own?
Um, if it's just for banking, I don't think it matters.
Somebody has a condo, they can do it.
Yeah.
Okay, it's not like you have to have a FB three or an, okay, just anything.
Now, if, uh, if, if someone has a condo and CC Nar say that uh, they won't allow something like that to be recorded to the property. That is a limitation that, that individual condo owner is going to need to be aware of. If they came to the county and asked and said, hey, we want to assign this to the condo, we would, we would go ahead and do it.
Okay.
But then.
Property owner.
Yep, that's exactly right. Someone with real property.
Okay.
It's got a parcel number, you can transfer units to it.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions about, that's the overall program, that's the, the TDR program. And the question is, ultimately, if you guys are comfortable with, with what we've mentioned so far, what are the boundaries? Um, as soon as we know what the boundaries are, I could finish writing that overlay zone. And we can determine whether or not we're going to choose the boundaries on a parcel-by-parcel basis as landowners come in and ask the question. Or we can generally speaking, come up with a generalized map that says, this is what we think the boundary should be. Provide an, or create an overlay zone, apply it to all the properties that are, are in it. And then if a landowner feels particularly aggrieved by either being in an area that they don't want to be in or, or otherwise agree, they can come on a parcel-by-parcel basis and make adjustments to the map. That's the, that's the direction I suggest we go. We take a broad brush in a big bite. And then we come back on a parcel-by-parcel basis as individual landowners request to be included, either in ascending area or in a receiving area.
What's the process of this? If we decide to do this broad brush overlay, is there like, um, a card in the mail that goes out to every homeowner saying you will now be in a receiving, you will now be, if you have any questions or to comments, please see this, you know?
Yeah, uh, sort of, a little bit more to it than that. Um, everyone gets a card in the mail, everyone who is affected by the overlay zone and anyone else within five hundred feet of, of the, those who are affected. And in this case, because every single space inside of the square, or excuse me, inside of the red, um, polygon is some kind of a zone, sending, receiving or hybrid. Everybody inside that polygon and everyone within five hundred feet of that polygon will get a, a notice that says the planning commission will hold a hearing on this date, so they'll get the notice at least 10 days in advance, if not sooner. Um, and then the planning commission holds a hearing, deliberates over the map. Uh, if you guys are comfortable with what we have, you recommend approval, then it goes to the county commission. They'll hold a public hearing, they'll do the same, um, they'll make whatever adjustments they see they deem fit. And then the map and the text that goes with the map gets adopted.
Okay.
Charlie, if we do nothing, what happens if we do nothing?
If you do nothing, then the TDRs that are, um, created by the form-based zone, that's all we have to work with and, oh, and ADUs. And I don't, I don't think that's terrible. Um, it just, I think it limits the options. And I, like, like we mentioned before, I think you want to diversify your TDR portfolio in order to uh, assure optimal success of a program. But you don't have to do anything. Okay, the next, uh, next steps I think that we need to make, whether we do it in today's meeting or a forthcoming meeting, is if you guys are comfortable doing kind of the broad brush, just going through and, and rubber sheeting these, uh, zones, pushing and pulling to where you're comfortable. So I'm going to send this out to you guys today. This is in no way by any means a complete document. But I'll tell you how I came up with it. First things first, I used the open lands map in the general plan to identify areas that were at least ten acres or larger without significant development on them. And then what I did is I started moving the lines around based on critical riparian area. For example, here is, um, uh, Middle Fork. And here is South Fork. Uh, North Fork as well, so critical riparian area, um, here, uh, the orange, uh, that you see here is critical wildlife area. Now, I'm still including that in part of it all along here, but you can see that all of it, with the exception of a little bit right in here, and we can change that, um, is, uh, the inside of a sending area, so trying to keep the development away from the critical, uh, migratory wildlife area. And then, let's see, what else did I look at here? I looked at where existing subdivisions are and where existing roadways are. And for the most part, along most roadways, at least the residential roadways, not the highway itself. Um, I carved out space for, uh, a, a hybrid area. So either sending or receiving along these roadways. And then internally, inside of these blocks, essentially is, is how I came up with these as our keep it preserved, keep it open kind of, uh, areas. So that's, that's basically how this map was created. Um, I tried to hold true to those principles as I was designing it, not going to say that I did a perfect job. But the idea is, the general plan says, move density where density already is. Move density where it's best supported, move density where there's already infrastructure, essentially is what the general plan talks about. And so everywhere where there's a roadway or already density in existence, that's the area where more density should be moved towards.
So Charlie, when you send this out, make sure, will you make sure there's a legend so we can understand?
Yeah. Yep, and, yep, give me, uh, actually, give me a couple of days and I'll, uh, I'll get it sent out to you guys with the legend on it.
So my, my initial thoughts on it as it sits is it's a pretty broad sending, receiving area. Yeah. I don't know that it, it needs, I, I would think it would be a little bit smaller in the, in the receiving. The sending area I think is open, but the receiving is, I think, I think are, we pushed for a little bit more tighter areas in receiving. But.
Okay. I think that's fair. Why don't we do this? I'm going to, instead of sending this out to you guys, um, I will send it out, um, it, in a, in a week or two. Um, as soon as I've got the legend and everything put together, but in our next planning commission meeting work session, why don't I come with some markers? And we'll just, we'll just draw what we think is, uh, appropriate. And then I'll aggregate everything that we, all the things the planning patient have, uh, put together. And then, uh, see what falls out from that. Are you guys okay with that idea? You'd have coloring time.
I think it's a great idea, having everybody do their own and then you can aggregate it as a general, this is what we've kind of come to. So I like that idea.
And when we, when we do that, we'll be, uh, each one of us will have, bring our unique knowledge of these particular areas. And so we can identify the areas that we think are absolutely critical to keep open. Um, at least that'll, that'll put more than just my head into this, I think. Okay. And then the, the last but not least, um, I'm going to offer a recommendation to the county commission with three options. Three options regarding the sending areas, whatever we decide the sending areas are. Option number one is whoever, let me zoom in here. Whoever owns property in ascending area, they can either develop whatever development rights they have uh, under the zone, or they can send. And that's the conversation we've had this, this entire time. That's option one. Option two, if you're in ascending area, you can only develop fifty percent of what the zone allows you to develop. But you still can send the other fifty percent. And then option three is you can't develop in these areas unless you develop as a cluster subdivision, keeping eighty percent of the property open. So those are the three options I'm contemplating. You guys have any issues with those three options?
I don't have any.
I, I like it.
Okay, and I, again, that, just a starting point, we can modify that and create a hybrid out of it, uh, whatever you guys may, uh, deem necessary as we work towards this. Great.
Okay.
What I have anything else for you?
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you, guys.
All right. With that, if there's any other comments from planning commissioners, anybody have anything?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Um, just my first thought is, is if we should try to keep it in the village areas that they're receiving and they shouldn't be able to send them out of it, I would, I would think.
I would agree.
Yeah, I assume that, yeah.
You know, what we could do with that is we, like I just mentioned, the three options, we could still have these lines here, but keep our village areas tight. So those are the only receiving areas. So these white areas are not receiving areas, but maybe instead, if you're in a wide area, you can either develop in place or send. And in the green areas, it's one of those hybrids that we mentioned. Maybe it's a, you could develop in place if it's a cluster or send. So we can even look at it, we could even slice it that way if you want to. So lots of different options and ideas available to us.
So Charlie, your idea of how, how about coloring it in, I think we'll find, uh, we'll find, I think a lot of, I think we'll get some, a lot of us will agree in the areas. So I would forward to that exercise.
Hey, sounds good. We'll plan on doing that in our next work session.
Okay. All right, guys. With that, we'll, uh, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.